Good evening and welcome to the East Greenwich School Committee Candidates Forum. I am Elizabeth McNamara, editor of East Greenwich News. We are presenting this forum tonight along with the East Greenwich Chamber of Commerce. There are three open seats on the school committee. Although there were originally four candidates running for school committee, this week we learned that Monica Mason, a Republican, has withdrawn. That leaves us with candidates Will Hangan, Tim Munoz, and Kevin Murphy, all Democrats. The questions I will be asking tonight are called from those submitted by our readers. We will start with opening statements from each candidate, followed by several rounds of questions. The forum will end with closing statements from the candidates. Now, here are the candidates. Hello, Will, Tim, and Kevin. You guys are all unmuted. So, we can begin. We're going to stay in our little boxes here. And just, I won't mute people if we aren't getting feedback. Just be mindful that if you're not talking, don't talk. We will start with opening statements from Will first. And remember, I will waive this if you bump up against that two-minute mark. So, go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you to the chamber. Thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight. My name is William Hangan. I'm running for the East Greenwich School Committee. Like many other families in town, my wife, myself, and our two daughters moved here for the East Greenwich School. We've been in town now for about five years, and during that time, my girlfriend went to five to six district schools. I see the values in our school and the benefits afforded to our children. My pledge to you is to work with the superintendent, the parents, the committee, and the council to continue to deliver great school. My focus is to keep our children safe and listen to the, you know, listen to the experts, to focus on addressing future problems our schools face due to a growing community, and to ensure we have the technology to support our students. A little about me is I work as a certified financial planner, citizen's wealth management. I have a master's in accounting and a graduate certificate in computer forensics. I was on the board of Canvas for the past three years. I like to think my strengths are budgeting, finance, and technology. I think I can bring an analytical mind to our current committee and work together to equip our students for what the future brings to them.
Okay. Apparently, we are having feedback issues. I apologize. So, what I will be doing is muting everybody who's not speaking, starting with you, Will. And next up is Tim, and so I'm going to mute Kevin. And I promise, if we do this in two years, I'll be better. I'll know better what I'm doing.
Okay. Hey, everybody. I'm Tim Munoz, and I'm a candidate for the school committee. I am passionate about education. Let me just say a word about that. So, I'm the son and the grandson of high school teachers. So, my mom taught at Sparsdale High School for 37 years, and that's where I went to school. So, I grew up in a teaching household. I have an insight, view of life as a teacher. If you had come to my wedding way back when, probably half the adults there were teachers. And then I went to Brown, and after that, I spent a year as a teaching assistant at the University of Pennsylvania. And then I moved into a career in business. But over that time, I've had several very meaningful intersections with education, too. So, I was a corporate program sponsor of Teach for America for four years. So, I got to work with Wendy Kopp and the leadership team there on issues of curriculum innovation and technology. So, that was a tremendous experience. And as part of that, I taught a few classes in Baltimore and the New York City Public Schools on financial literacy. So, that was really my first time in front of a class. And then later on, I actually was an adjunct lecturer at Wharton for six years. So, twice a year, I taught a week-long class in innovation to MBA students and executive education students. And then for the past couple of years, I've lectured at Stanford Business School, and I'm working with the faculty on a case study there. So, by no means am I a professional educator, but I just tell you those things because I've at least put my toe in the water a little bit, and I would say that growing up in a teaching family and then just having a little bit of experience, and I just have, you know, profound respect for every teacher in every school at every level who stands up in front of a group of students and has to open up their minds and engage them. So, it's just, it's hard work. It's exhilarating. It can be frustrating, but it's probably one of the most important things we do. And that's a big reason why I'm running. Just quickly, I've had a long career in business, too, and so I've been an officer of two large companies, two Fortune 500 companies. I worked at Comcast. I was corporate vice president at Comcast, and I was the head of marketing for a big financial services firm, like Mason. I spent a lot of years as a management consultant also in New York, and I lived in London for four years. I've done a lot of things around the world. So, I would just say there that, you know, I think I have some strategic and managerial and financial skills that, experiences, you know, that hopefully can be relevant to the work on the school committee. So, I just would say that, you know, it's a combination of my passion for education and, you know, the intersection of education and many of the things that I've done. And then also, you know, after a long career in the corporate world, too, I think I can hopefully add value to the work in the school committee, and I look forward to talking about some of the issues and some of the specific challenges we have ahead of us.
Thank you, Tim. Kevin, to you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I appreciate the opportunity. Also, Will and Tim, it's an honor and a pleasure to be with you here on this candidate forum. Also, just briefly, want to send my thoughts and prayers to Ms. Mason. I hope she recovers. I don't know the extent of the health issues, but, you know, my heart goes out to her and her family. I hope she's okay, Ms. Mason. Just some brief comments about myself. I've been East Greenwich resident since 1977, and it's been a huge part of my life, obviously. You know, I've been blessed to have been in East Greenwich for that period of time, and also, it's given me, it's shaped and informed my life in many ways. I had the pleasure of attending first Little Red Hen as nursery school, and then from there, which I'm pleased to know that doors are still open. I'm 47 years old, so it's nice to know that Little Red Hen is still around. And from there, I went to Frenchtown kindergarten, and it was a great experience. You know, given my Irish Catholic background, my parents sent me to Our Lady of Mercy. So, unfortunately, fortunately, I was able to get a great Catholic education, but unfortunately, I missed at least 70% of my friends who went to Frenchtown School. So, but, you know, we always kept tabs along the way, and I could always kind of gauge where I was in the educational spectrum, even though I was at Our Lady of Mercy and they were at Frenchtown. You know, I was able to stay very close with a number of my friends, and I really longed for the day to be able to go to school with them again. Fortunately, I, with Cole, at the time, in the 1980s, up until, Cole was a junior high. So, I went to Our Lady of Mercy from first grade through sixth grade, and then I attended Cole Junior High, seventh grade and eighth grade. And those were actually two of the best years of my life, quite honestly. It was for a variety of reasons. One, it was a new school. It was a public school. There's no uniforms. And I was able to finally reconnect with all my friends in the neighborhood and on all the sporting teams I'd played, that I'd played on over the years, East Greenwich Soccer, East Greenwich Baseball, and everything else in between. So, it was really great to connect with my friends again and to be able to attend, at the time, it was the best junior high in the state. And, you know, I think about these times when, you know, I look at my kids in school, and my daughter is in accelerated program, and my son is in a, has an IEP. And, you know, I was given a lot from East Greenwich, and I want to make sure I'm able to give back to not only Marion William, but also my son Rory, who's two and a half. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will start the questioning with Tim. Hold on. Going to unmute you. And, Tim, by state law, school committees are vested with the entire, hold on just a second. Actually, I'm going to mute you again. I think that's the issue. By state law, school committees are vested with the entire care, control, and management of all public school interests. Yet, there have been some difference of opinion among East Greenwich School Committee members as to what that actually looks like. What level of detail would you expect to be involved in as a school committee member? And I will unmute you.
Okay. Thank you. Good question. So, you know, the school committee has three very distinct and, I think, fairly tightly defined responsibilities. One is that they set policy for the district. The second one is that they hire and oversee the superintendent. And the third one is that they prepare an annual budget and submit that to the town council. I think it's not unusual for people to think that the school committee either has more opportunity to do things or sometimes constrain into other areas. But, you know, I've spent a lot of time with each member of the current school committee, and so, and I feel fairly confident in saying this. And it's a terrific group of very talented people who all understand those three responsibilities. So, it's the superintendent and it's the district that is responsible for all operations in the school. And, you know, really, I think the school committee perhaps in the past might have strayed in certain areas, but again, these are very tightly defined roles. Set policy, which is a huge thing, render the budget, and then hire and oversee the superintendent. But our job is not to get involved with the administration or, you know, anything that pertains to school operations. So, if you stay in that, stay in those three lanes, I think that's a good thing, and again, a matter of statute. You're on mute, I think.
Sorry. There's a, the way it's built into this, the page, I can't always get to the unmute in a timely fashion. So, next up will be Kevin.
Thank you. I have a degree with my colleague, Tim. I actually had the opportunity to speak with the former superintendent and current superintendent. And like Tim and Will, I've talked to as many people as possible, both in the, you know, in the committee and then outside the committee. I, you know, I do believe that it is essentially, you know, very much our charge as a school committee to establish policy. I, too, would like to essentially, quote unquote, stay in our lane. You know, I believe that the superintendent and the finance director should work in tandem to essentially develop a plan, and then that plan should be explained to the school committee, and then the school committee would essentially review the plan and discuss, and then have any questions or comments for the superintendent. I know that in the past, I've heard some comments where the school committee might become too involved in the process, and I think it is very much a policy-setting board, and I think it should behave as such.
Thank, thank you. Will, to you now.
So, I'm going to agree with Kevin and Tim. You know, our job is to create policy when needed, to deliver a responsible budget, and to oversee the superintendent. Any, if an issue arises or something needs to be addressed as a committee, I think we would come together and deal with that, and deal with the superintendent. But we should just stick to our lane and allow the superintendent to do what she has to do. She's, I think she's done a great job. And let her do her job.
Okay. Thanks for that. The next question is, how do you think the district has handled COVID-19? Are there things the district could or should be thinking about as winter approaches? And should the district look at renting additional space so Cole and East Greenwich High School students could be in person more than two days a week? That question goes first to Kevin. Hold on. Kevin, you're up.
Okay. Thank you. Well, first of all, I think the East Greenwich School District and the East Greenwich School Committee has done a fantastic job, particularly over the last four years, and I think even more importantly, over the last few months since February, March. As a child of, as a father of three children, two of whom are in Cole Junior High or Cole Middle School, excuse me, I always say that to my kids, and like, Dad, it's not a junior high anymore. At any rate, so, my daughter's in eighth grade, and my son's in sixth grade, and I saw, you know, how difficult it was to have this distance learning. Fortunately, my daughter was very skilled at the computer, and she really, she took it to it like a fish to water, essentially. My son, not so much. He needed that, you know, he's considered a part of vulnerable population, and he needed more attention. And fortunately, he was able to get attention with his IEP, you know, at Meadowbrook, at Hanford. But when it was distance learning, it was much more challenging, and so that challenge fell to the parents. We did our best, but it was very difficult. But I must say, once the pandemic was clear and the dangers were clear, and we were doing distance learning, I think the school district did a fantastic job working on a program and providing laptops to those who could not afford them, and really trying to communicate as much as possible with the parents to ensure that the child, you know, the specific students were picking up where they left off. Now, I think there was a one- or two-week gap there, but that's pretty impressive for any, for any scenario where, you know, you essentially went from something that has never been done before. So, to have it change that quickly and to move forward that quickly, it was exceptional, quite honestly. I mean, there are so many unknowns about the virus right now, and it's near impossible to ask to make a decision that'll please everyone, but I think if we continue to follow the science, the goal is to have them in school as much as possible, provided that it's safe. I don't think we've done anything wrong to date. I think it's just day by day, as it always has been, really, since the pandemic was, the dangers of the pandemic were made known to us. So, I really think it's a day by day. There's no specific details that I would add now, other than what we're doing, and I think they're doing a great job.
Okay. Thank you. We go to Will next, correct?
So, I have two daughters in the schools. I think the district has done a great job so far. I fully agree with the decision for K through five to be in school full-time, as I think there's, I think the value is there, and at that age, they should be in school full-time. I would like to see Cole and High School get to full-time this year, if possible. I mean, looking, you know, renting space is not something I'm opposed. I'd like to look into that and see if it's something that can be done. With that being said, if school isn't back to full-time by, you know, towards the end of next year, I'd like to explore getting, getting the seniors at the high school, at least back to school full-time. We can look at giving them, you know, giving that to them. We know kids are giving up so much this year, and senior year is a very stressful time. So, I think if we could bring them together for senior year, at least for that last semester, I think it'd be very helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Will. Tim, you are up. Hold on just a second.
Yeah, so I would echo what, you know, what Kevin and Will both said, which was, I think the district has, you know, performed remarkably well. And, you know, I know how hard, and I know Kevin and Will did, too, how hard so many people work on the school committee and, you know, especially in the district, you know, starting with Mrs. Meyer. So, tireless, and Mr. Wilmarth, and Mr. Arnoff, and so you can just imagine the issues with, you know, preparing facilities to be properly ventilated and to be socially distanced, and obviously to, you know, enable everybody with technology for hybrid models and, you know, potentially all-distance learning models and so, you know, the work was extraordinary. What I would just say, and answer to the, you know, part of your question, Elizabeth, which I think is a really interesting one, I met with Mrs. Meyer in July, and I went in there all, you know, pepped up, and she's just, you know, as so many know, she's just delightful and smart as a whip, and but I went in there, I said, so are we. We're looking at, you know, the armory and, you know, kind of, the town becomes a campus, and so, you know, we can borrow facilities from everywhere, and that way we can get more people in the, in classrooms. And, you know, it's a little more of a burden on transportation, but, you know, parents will pitch in, and it'll almost be like you're in college. You're shuttling around the different buildings rather than just going to one facility. And we can use students, former students, and, you know, young people in town to be proctors, and, you know, retired people will come out. It's like working at the polls. And so, all kinds of ideas about how you might extend the physical plant. And she looked at me with her, you know, lovely grin, and she said, great ideas, we're talking about them, you know, singing from the same hymnal, however. And then she went into, you know, some very practical reasons about we couldn't, how we can't turn non-school facilities into, you know, extended classroom spaces. I mean, I had said, aren't we renting tents, you know, with heaters? It's like a big wedding's going to go on. And so, you know, some of the practical issues, without getting too far into it, are you have to have nurses and health aides everywhere. You know, you have to have, you know, professional teachers there, and you're taking them out of the classroom. So, at a time when they're, you know, stretched in terms of, you know, hybrid learning models and stuff like that, they really don't have time to be proctors. You can't deputize, you know, amateurs to go in and fill those roles. So, it's a great thought. I know that the school committee and the district have looked at it. It's not off the table. It has a lot of practical problems. I think the one last thing I would say is just that, you know, a lot of the time spent over the summer was in formulating different scenarios for reopening the schools and submitting those to the state, and before that, you know, very importantly, canvassing, you know, so many of the families in the district. So, I think Mrs. Meyer and crew and the school committee got some tremendous inputs. They synthesized that into different plans, and then it goes to RIDE. And while it's understandable, RIDE had to absorb, you know, 40-plus plans coming from schools, coming from LEAs all over the state. And so, it took them a long time to both decide on general guidelines that apply to all schools and to approve, you know, town-specific plans. So, for anybody who might have any doubts that things could have been done better or different, perhaps, you know, on the margins, but again, I just think, you know, there was some really heroic work done, and I know a lot of creative thinking about, you know, how we could make, you know, social distancing and distance learning work better. So, kudos to everybody involved.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tim. The next question goes to Will first, and it is, in 2019, the school, the state education commissioner ruled that schools can't charge fees for field trips. A ruling prompted by our own EG school committees question about that issue. COVID-19 has put field trips on hold, but the policy now is to encourage but not require parents to donate to fund extracurricular activities like field trips and certain clubs like drama club while building extra, while, with the intent to build extra funding into the budget. What is your thought about how the district should provide extracurricular activities?
Well, I'm familiar with this. I remember when my daughter was at Cole, and she did the Washington trip, and I think that's what everyone's talking about. So, if it's mandatory, I think the school or the district should pay for it. If we're not gonna, if it's not mandatory, then I think it's, you know, I don't have a problem with it. I think the issue was that there were, there was a benefit for the kids who went, and there were me kids who couldn't afford to go. So, I mean, I guess, I guess, let me just backtrack a little bit. I'm all for it if the town, if we can figure out a way to pay for it, whether that's doing an extra show, doing a fundraising, doing some sort of event, then I'm all for it.
Okay. Thank you. Next up would be, I can't believe I'm getting so confused. Tim, hold on. Go, Tim.
Yeah, you know, I think Will basically, on some hours, did pretty well. You know, again, you want to make sure that there's no reason to disagree with the use of funds, so, you know, it's the only thing we can do to make it better. My understanding is that this was obviously a helpful topic to remember, following it, but I think it's worth reconsidering. And so, we're not going to have to deal with field trips for, at least for the short future of the future, but I think we can work out a solution that sends him, you know, some, you know, this, and we just spend a lot of time with him.
Tim, there is a lot of feedback in your audio. I don't know if there's a way for you to turn off any other windows that you have on your computer. Not really sure what it is. It's better when I mute everybody, but that last one, it was a little hard to understand. So, I'm just sorry to call you out like that. The technology stuff is tough. So, if you are able to do anything on your end, what I've been told is to close out as many, to close out as many windows or tabs that you have and just have this open. Okay. Now, we will go to, next up is Kevin. Hold on. Go, Kevin.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Elizabeth Myers?
No feedback.
No feedback. Okay. So, I'm glad that Will has firsthand experience with this issue. I do not have firsthand experience, other than my conversations with current committee members. I was able, fortunately, able to hear most of Tim's comments, and I think the crux of Tim's comments were that, you know, he wants to be fair and equitable, and he agrees with Will's comments. So, I'll build off Tim's commentary and Will's. I think it comes down to a question of equity, really. We really have to make sure that we're providing, basically, not only level playing field, but also just overall fairness. So, if something is offered to one student, it should be offered to all, and we should work towards allocating funds for that if it's determined that a trip to Washington, DC is a very valuable teaching and learning experience. And one could argue that you can learn just as much outside the classroom as inside the classroom, then that should be considered an important field trip, and then it should, the door should be open to all students, not just some. And that's just my opinion. I actually have a different experience. I have a friend of mine who happened to have, happened to be having a seminar in Washington, DC, and so, he, my daughter and I went to DC when she was 10 years old, and she's a bit like me, and she's, actually, she's a great book learner and great reading, but she's also an experiential learner as well. So, she gained more from that trip to DC than she ever would have in a day or two in class. I mean, there we were in DC for two or three days straight. You know, you just can't, you can't make that up. That's when the classroom comes alive. And so, I believe in those types of trips. I went to law school at Catholic University. The whole reason why I went to Catholic University was because I wanted to experience Washington, DC firsthand and gain as much legal experience as I could firsthand. So, that was my personal choice, and I believe in it. And if others find this type of learning and these type of experiences and field trips helpful and useful, they should be open to all.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. The next question goes to Tim first. I will read the question, and then I'm going to mute myself. So, students with disabilities have the lowest achievement and the lowest growth of any group in this district. What, if any, experience do you have with special education and students who are differently abled?
Yeah. No, thank you for that. You know, I do have experience with IEPs, so I know that really personally. You know, an IEP is really, you know, a school for one, and which IEP is, you know, has its... You know, an IEP is really, you know, a school for one, which IEP is, you know, as it's, as it's stated, but it's an individualized learning plan. So, you know, the amount of time that any teacher, any educator, any parent professional has to spend on each child is significant. But, you know, we just actually, we're answering questions from UG engaged and also from the pendulum and we all wrote to this. You know, it really is, and I mean, I believe this so deeply, it really is the test of our success as a school system, if we can really deliver a quality education experience for each and every child regardless of, you know, differentially able situations, whether you're on IEPs or 504s. What I think the job of the school committee is quite specifically is to make sure that, you know, number one, special populations are always front and center. It shouldn't just be the province of, you know, parents and CAC, it should be an active agenda item for the superintendent, and I know it is, and for the school committee too, that's constantly, you know, constantly being looked at. And especially in terms of the budget, we should be spending money to support our special populations proportionate to the size of that universe. It's about 15% of total children in the district who are on an IEP or 504. That's a very significant group of people and so we have to make sure that we provide for them on a budget basis proportionate to the size of that population, number one, and then most importantly commensurate with the needs, with the actual special requirements needed to service them. But it really is arguably the most important thing we do. We have high achievers and we have a wonderful school system, but how good we are at the end of the day comes down to how we serve our most vulnerable and how most committed and creative we are in rendering an education to specific individual kids who are on IEPs and 504s. I think it's the most important thing we do.
Thanks for that, Tim. Next up is Kevin. Hi, Kevin.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you. I, as I mentioned earlier, my son William has an IEP and before William, I mean, I had very little experience with the IEP curriculum and the concept in general. However, over the past several years, I've become intimately familiar with IEP and meeting with the teachers. You know, it's interesting, I was, I was fortunate enough to not only go to East Greenwich Schools, but I also went to Providence Country Day and Chilwell Rosemary Hall. So I, I went to college preparatory school because I wanted to go to Brown. So I felt fortunate enough to have that and there were great resources there. To my surprise, when I was bringing my children from, at first, Our Lady of Mercy, I shifted them to public schools. And so, you know, my kids went to Meadowbrook and Hannaford. We determined William's IEP at OLM. They didn't have the resources, unfortunately, to handle William's needs. So rather than just move one child to Hannaford, we moved William to Meadowbrook and Mary to Hannaford. I would have liked to have kept them at, at OLM a little bit longer, but East Greenwich School Systems were great, Mary was able to excel in her classes and then William was able to get the attention needed in IEP. And I, as, when I went to my first meetings with the teachers, we were at a roundtable discussion and I was, shocked isn't the right word, but just so pleasantly surprised that there were so many people involved in William's life and they were all around the table. And we, we had a great discussion. It was, it was moving, it was, it was enlightening, it was rewarding and it really made me believe in the, the system, the school district and, and what they're doing with, you know, with, with, you know, how they're approaching William's individual needs, to Tim's point. You know, it's, it's a classroom of one in some cases, that's how they treat each child and it hearkens back to the old days where, you know, a couple decades ago where no child left behind. I really felt that way when I was at these meetings with multiple teachers at least three or four times a year to talk about William's IEP. I felt that we had the attention of the school and we were able to work towards a very positive outcome for William.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Next up it's Bill, I mean, Will, sorry.
That's all right, Bill's fine. I, I don't have much experience with IEP or 504. I, I'm pleased to hear that, that Kevin's had a good experience. I do think if we're, if East Greenwich is gonna continue to have great schools and, and, you know, be that excellent school system we strive for, we gotta be excellent across the board and we have, and that means with IEP as well. I think it should be, I think we need to continue investing in IEP. IP students are, they're, they're students in our community just as much as, as anyone else. So I, I see the value there and I think we, again, we need to continue to invest in, in IEP and 504 and to, to maintain our level of excellence, we have to do the best all around, so.
Okay, thank you. Will, you are actually up next for the, oh no, Kevin is, sorry, Kevin is. Kevin, and everybody, "Do you support the continued deployment of school resource officers to our schools or do our schools have needs that could be met by other means?"
Well, I've given this some thought and, you know, I, I think it's important to, I mean, East Greenwich is considered quote unquote a safe environment and so I think it's important to continue to have the officers there. But I, I think, and, and I think that would give a lot of parents peace of mind. There was a blip, I don't know, with William, did you see that?
Yeah, yeah.
Should I continue or?
Yeah, you should. I'm just trying to figure out where William went, but, I mean, he's there, I just don't have a picture, so. But continue.
Sure. Well, I'll keep my comments relatively short, but, you know, I, again, I think we live in a relatively safe community, thank God. And so, you know, one might be tempted to say that a student resource, a student resource officer would, would not be necessary in East Greenwich because, knock on wood, there have been no shootings, there haven't been incidents of that nature. However, I think you can never really let your guard down, so I would want to keep the resource officers there and, and I would just want to allocate funds to be able to not only have the resources for a student resource officer, but also extend those resources. So, you know, you know, we have, you know, other resources for the child, counselors, this, you know, and other resources for the child to be there when there aren't these emergency situations, but the everyday and particularly when we're talking about COVID-19. You know, there are, there are social emotional components of distance learning and, and that. And even if, even like my son William, I constantly bring him up, but he's there four days a week, my daughter's there two days a week. So my daughter feels there's a disconnect. So while we have the resource officers there and that's great for protection, I think there needs to be other counselors present for the children who, who may be experiencing a difficult time during this hybrid learning, distance learning and things of that nature.
Would you, would you support using the money that we spend, well, actually the town supplies the school resource officers, but I mean, would you support a reallocation? I guess, Kevin, you know, that would be more specific.
I would. I would. And I would want to discuss that with my fellow committee members, but, you know, I'm very open-minded and collaborative in nature, so I'd want to discuss that with, with my fellow committee members, you know, but I would be very open to that.
Okay, thank you. Will, welcome back and, and next to you, so I don't know if you heard, but, "Do you support the continued deployment of school resource officers to our schools or do our schools have needs that could be met by other means?"
Sure. I, I do support the resource officers in the school. I think it makes our children feel safe and as a parent, I like knowing that they're there. I do think we need to explore adding additional, additional psychologists and a social worker. After, after speaking with, you know, some of the principals and teachers, it seems like there is a need for that. I would like to, I would, I would work with the town council, the committee and the superintendent to see if we can address that issue. But I do support having the school resource officers in the school.
Okay, thank you. Tim, you are next, hold on.
Yeah, I'm probably in a slightly different place here. I would echo what Kevin said, which is, I don't know the numbers specifically and, and the costs, so I would certainly want to know that. You know, as a rule of thumb, I would like to shift the balance. I think the schools are a place of, you know, peace and sanctuary and joy and that the culture of the school is extremely important, you know. I know there are individuals acting as school resource, school resource workers who are terrific with kids and everything. I would rather see us put more money against people who are trained in social emotional learning and adolescent psychology and I would like to shift the balance. And I, I really do think it's an issue of culture. So it's a, it's a good question, I think the school committee, you know, should be looking at it. But in general, I'm, I, I would like to see people who are trained in working with kids, who made that their life's work, who have some special aptitude and training in what that means, rather than some folks who, you know, are well-meaning and again, in individual cases can be very effective. You know, we've had some issues in the past and I'm sure that's part of the genesis of this question. You know, but in general, I, I would like to, you know, keep the school culture, the manner of education and keep the professionals who work there, people who are trained in working with kids.
Okay, thank you, Tim. And that takes us to our next question, which is Will, to Will first. Now, more, more than ever, technology is playing a central role in our schools. What are we doing right? What could we do better? And how do we balance screen time with face-to-face interaction?
Sure, that's, that's a good question too. I think what we're doing right is going to the, the one-to-one model. I think technology's gonna continue to take a large and large role in our schools and education. I think we should, I, I know we, we offer, you know, tech skills, but I think we should, we should explore adding more coding, networking, software skills to, to the, to the high school curriculum, even, even at middle school if, if that's possible, just to prepare students for what the future's gonna bring them. We know technology's making the world smaller, making everything faster, but I think we are doing, doing well in getting, getting the one-to-one for every student as, as a way to minimize the screen time. You know, and one of the EG engaged questions were, was about, do I support a homework policy? And so I'm just gonna tap on that. I, I do as long as homework is, is not done on device because I, we know our kids are on devices in school all the time and I like to reduce that at home.
Okay, thank you. Next up will be Tim.
Yeah, no, I'm glad we're talking about this. You know, I, I think technology is a kind of a significant part of why I'm so interested to serve. And again, I've seen the power of technology, so I would say this, I don't think anyone from Mrs. Meyer to Dr. Arnoff to almost any parent or student would say that, you know, the rapid adoption of technology should be done in a pandemic, kind of a, really a one-to-one. So, you know, the teachers who have worked so hard just to get content up and just to get lessons plan going and just to ensure connectivity and everything like that, you know, obviously we have to give, you know, full, full respect to them. But if you just step back for a second, you know, our kids, even starting at a very young age, are digital natives. While we certainly don't want them, you know, wasting time on devices and, you know, some of those very real things, they're growing up in a world where technology is second nature, where, you know, these interfaces are intuitive to them if not to, you know, teachers and adults and they're gonna spend the rest of their lives increasingly in a technology-driven world. So I, I think if you step back for a second, we should look at this as a period where we can do a little experimentation around the margins, but I think as part of the work of the school committee, one of the key responsibilities coming up for the next folkserving in, in the next four years is to develop a five-year strategic plan. And I think the key element of that strategic plan should be, you know, a real position on technology. So what we've gleaned so far, again, which is in, you know, very suboptimal circumstances and, and is largely transferring content, you know, onto platforms like Google Classroom and CS and things like that, but then going well beyond that and looking at, you know, going forward, how can technology, you know, really make the teachers' work, augment what the teacher does in the classroom, you know, help kids develop a sense of autonomy and, you know, self-initiative in terms of learning. And I think really a very important component that technology can bring is, it really allows different kinds of learning styles to thrive. So there are kids who are really good in a classroom where it's a lecture situation or where it's reading-driven or whatever the, you know, the operative modality is in that particular class and that particular course. But if you step back for a second, if you can go online and you can express yourself creatively and if you're shy, you know, there's no shyness when you're developing, you know, a multimedia presentation. You can work in teams, you're probably gonna spend the rest, rest of your lives when you're in, you know, going into college and university, going into a job, going into a business as an adult, you're gonna spend the rest of your life working in teams and working on digital platforms. This stuff is here to stay. So I think long's very short, we need to really have a healthy regard for the fact that this is a forced experience right now and, and, you know, far less than desirable, but we ought to use this opportunity as part of the strat plan to look at where technology can take us because there really is a, you know, a tremendous upside down the road.
Okay, thank you, Tim. That leaves Kevin, right? We are still needing to hear from Kevin on technology, so go for it, Kevin.
Elizabeth, sorry to bother you, would you mind just repeating?
No problem, no problem. You know, by the third time, that's, that sounds like it should be. So more than ever, technology is playing a central role in our schools. What are we doing right? What could we do better? And how do we balance screen time with face-to-face interaction?
All right. Well, so I, I agree, I mean, technology's definitely playing a central role now more than ever. We had no choice. And, and as I mentioned earlier in this forum, we essentially had a, really a two-week period where the whole world changed and we adapted quite well to it and that's, that's remarkable, as I said. So technology's no doubt playing a central role. I have no problem with that, provided there's a balance and that's true with most things. As long as there's a balance, then I think, striking the proper balance can be healthy. You, you gain in the sense that you're, you're actually, you know, abreast and, and up-to-date with technology, you're facile with it, obviously, that technology isn't going anywhere. So these young students will eventually be in the workforce and the technology will be at least as complicated as it, as it is now and at least as invasive and prevalent. So you, you might as well learn now while you're in school and then it becomes essentially second nature because eventually this, these children will enter the workforce. So I'm okay with technology and its use now. I think we had no choice and I think students and teachers adapted very well to it. So to say that there's a, I think that you phrase it right or wrong, I don't think there's...
What are we doing, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What are we doing right? What could we do better?
What we did right is we adapted quickly. And I don't think we're doing anything wrong, dot, 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 yet. And, and sometimes it takes a little while to figure out when you're doing something wrong because we almost need more data. It, right now, it seems like we adapted well. Right now, it seems like our children aren't totally inundated by it, but I think we're also finding that after the school day, for IEP and non-IEP, because I have both children in both forms of education, they are in some cases exhausted after that, that, basically that day, that distance learning, they can't really do much after that. So I think we should have to be careful with balancing their energy and, and knowing that at the end of the day, they're children and at the end of the day, you know, we're human beings, we are animals and we are social creatures and we do need to relax, we do need to socialize, we do need exercise and we do need time away from screens.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. The next question goes to Tim first. COVID has helped us recognize the value of teachers if we didn't already, yet the fact... Yet the fact remains that the school district's largest expense, by far, is salaries. What role should the school committee have in balancing personnel costs with the desire to keep tax increases low? Hold on.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. So, you know, salaries and benefits are almost 80% of the school budget. So out of the $42 million that we're receiving, period, during our year generating, I'm honest with you, most of that is going to be the people's costs. But, and it's a very important role for the school committee going forward in the next four-year period. There's a new teacher contract that needs to be developed and put in place by 2022. So that's a critical task for the incumbent community and the new members. But, you know, I think our teachers, again, are such vibrant part of not just the, you know, what goes on in the classroom and happening to the students, but, you know, the value we used to rent it, whether you're looking at the asset value of your house, the reputation value of the town, you know, again, I think I mentioned this in some of the stuff for the pendulum, you know, what makes us, you know, a wonderful place to live and not just another leafy suburb, really is, you know, in addition to waterfront and main street, it is primarily the schools. So, you know, the school budget, again, I think is about almost 60% of the town budget, too. So, you know, when you look at the town budget, you're looking at the schools. You know, we're in a union environment, and I think teachers should, again, I'm a proud son of a, you know, a unionized teacher, and I'm extremely pro-teacher. You know, I think we want a contract for 2022 that's fair and that obviously, you know, respects, I think, the different circumstances that we'll be under right now. The best thing that we can do is to advocate more, to get more help from RIDE, and to make sure that the quality of our teachers is consistent. I mean, part of the, you know, part of the reason for the expenses is that we have a lot of level 10 teachers, we have a lot of retired teachers, and at some point, you know, they'll be retiring and there'll be a wave of new teachers and younger teachers who will cost less, so that might provide a little bit of relief. What you never want to do is take away anything that teachers aren't entitled to and don't deserve, and they don't deserve honor, they're bound to, you know, wish we were Finland. You know, Finland is, you know, again, year after year, is always rated the best school system in the world, and a big part of that is because they pay their teachers more than anything in the profession. So, you know, I think if we want East Greenwich to continue, as the town, where I know you love, with the school being a family tree, you know, a core asset of the town, I think we really need to support the teachers. Obviously, it may be a matter of costs and, you know, that negotiation for 2022, and the circumstances, the economic challenges is a big deal.
Next up will be Kevin. On the same question, which is, you know, how to balance the need to compensate our teachers while keeping in mind that the town council is the one that handles the budget and usually wants to keep any increases below 2%.
Understood. So thanks for repeating the question and also adding that additional information. You know, that's always a challenge. I mean, it's an age-old challenge where you want to essentially get the biggest bang for your buck, and you want to make sure that you also have that quality. So I'm a corporate attorney by trade, and I've been a corporate attorney since 2002. So I've reviewed countless contracts over the years. I would want to review the current contract, not because I can change it at this point in time, but I'd like to review the current contract and to make sure that the teachers are compensated properly, and also to make sure that the school is benefiting properly. So there's no doubt, I agree with Tim, there's no doubt in my mind that East Greenwich School System is the crown jewel of our town. And you can't have a great school without great teachers. You can't. So it's just of the utmost importance to protect teachers and ensure they have contracts that are fair to the teachers, and there's fair and just compensation. But again, at the same time, I want to make sure that, I really look forward to the next round of contract, because, you know, that's what I do for a living, and I really want to dive into each provision and just to get a better framework of where we are now, look at the current contract, see what we can do maybe in the future. Maybe there are ways that both parties can benefit. Maybe there are ways that the teachers can at least maintain the current benefits they have now, if not more. But by the same token, the children, the students, can benefit more as well. Ultimately, as Tim and Will, we all know that people move to East Greenwich for the schools, for the most part, so we have to protect the schools and the teachers. And then as far as taxes, my goal is, you know, the town council handles that, the tax situation, but, you know, I'd like to do as much as possible with essentially as little as possible. So I want to make sure that it's structured properly where, you know, we don't have to increase taxes to maintain the best quality.
Okay, thank you. Will, you're next. Hold on, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Sure, I agree.
Uh-oh, we lost Will. There you are back.
Am I on mute, by the way? Just wanted to make sure there's no feedback.
You are not on mute, but I will mute you now.
Can you hear me?
Will? Yes. Go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sure. I agree with Kevin and Tim that the schools are the crown jewel of East Greenwich. With that being said, I'd like to look at the old contract as well. Just, I'd like to look it over with Kevin, if that's what he does, and just pick his brain. I do think we need to depend on our town. We need to, you know, depend on our town council to do what's right, to continue to bring in new businesses and to bring new people into the town. It's going to bring in more revenue to the town, which will support the schools. As far as taxes, that's a question for the town council, but I'd like to do with what we have. You know, I like to look into different ways to save money. You know, one thing is, one area may be to have interns for substitute teachers, so we can save some costs there. I know right now, we're just not competitive, but if we can look, if we can shave some fat somewhere, I'm all for that before ever looking to re-tax us.
I'm trying to decide if I go with one more question, or I have a couple of lightning round questions before we get to our closings. These are not really related to how you might serve on the school committee, but kind of give maybe a sense of how, you know, beyond, you know, your experience with schools. And so I will start with, we, last one was Tim. So next up would be Kevin. Thank you. I should know that. All right. This is short answers here, so that we can get to closings. What's one subject you wish you'd paid better attention to in school?
I would say math or social studies. I ended up becoming a history major at Brown, and I think if I paid a little more attention in what was called then social studies, I think I may be a more engaged citizen even as a child.
Okay, thank you. You know what? I'm going to ask you both at the same time. What qualities in a teacher do you think are most important? Kevin, this is you, too. We'll just do both at the same time.
Qualities in a teacher?
Yeah, what qualities in a teacher do you think are the most important?
I would say patience and understanding, top two, probably. Not to mention, obviously, the knowledge itself, the underlying knowledge, but patience and that is, that's a virtue, so, but that's usually important.
Okay, thank you. Will, to you. What's one subject you wish you'd paid better attention to in school?
Oh, that's easy. That would be science. My wife's a nurse, and sometimes she talks to me and I'm lost. But my two daughters are, they have a real good grasp on science, so I wish I had focused a little more on science.
Okay. And then what qualities in a teacher do you think are most important?
I'm going to say integrity and patience. I mean, I taught my, both of my daughters how to read when they were three, when they were about three years old. Took a lot of patience, so our teachers, I think patience is important.
Okay, thank you. Tim, to you. The same question. So do you remember them before I mute myself? What you wished you'd paid more attention to, and then qualities in a teacher that you think are most important?
You know, if we're talking about K through 12, what I regret most is probably, you know, because of my mom, both of my parents spoke five different languages, and I came up short with only two. So, you know, when we traveled when we were kids and stuff like that, you know, wherever they went in the world, you know, they're immersed, and I just felt like, you know, I was the caboose. So I have a facility for language and all that, but somehow I think I let my mom and dad down a little bit there. And then also, I'll just quickly say, and Kevin will get a kick out of this, but, you know, for those of you who know Brown, that lefty hotbed that reinvented the curriculum in the late 60s, they blew up distribution requirements, and so you go to Brown and, you know, there's no mandatory, you know, curriculum at all, you can take whatever you want. And so I would echo what Will said, because I sort of had a, I think I told Mark Schwager this, I said, "Ask me how many STEM courses I took in four years at Brown." And I think Dr. Schwager said, "Don't even tell me." And I said, "Yeah, I think it's single digits, it's under three," whatever. But I think it's actually one. So I just OD'd on the rewards and the humanities. Qualities in a teacher, real quick, and again, you know, I had some good role models growing up. I think all great teachers have so many different things going for them, but I would say they are all students of human nature. I don't think you can, again, step in front of a classroom and motivate a student and work with, you know, all kinds of different students who come from different backgrounds and who have different orientations and different learning styles, unless you're pretty quick at, you know, reading and reacting. So I think all great teachers are great students of human nature.
Thank you, Tim. We're going to go to closings now, and because, Will actually is up again, but because he had to start this whole thing off, I think I'm going to start with Kevin and then just rotate around that way. So, you know, we weren't able to cover everything, so if there's anything you feel like we didn't cover and you want to throw that in your closing, please feel free. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to keep my comments relatively short. It's two minutes, correct? Great. Well, you know, when I reflect upon my decision to run, I was asked by a couple of people early on, and I really had to think about it. We're all so busy, and I think to myself, I'm like, how am I going to, you know, essentially, how am I going to be a practicing attorney with my own law firm? How am I going to run my law firm, run a property management company, and still maintain my judgeship and my relationship with my wife and three children? Not to mention East Greenwich Planning Board and various other boards and committees, including the Ryback Board and other boards. So I really had to look hard at it, and had a conversation with my wife, Kate, and we just kind of said, "We'll figure out a way." And one of the things I told Kate, I said, "You know, we all have other things we can do, but do we have better things that we can do?" And I thought to myself, there really is nothing better than being able to give back to a school system and a town that gave me so much. So I thought to myself, you know, who am I, who am I to walk away from this? You know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. You know, the current school committee carried the torch, you know, really turned the town around, you know, town council and school committee turned the town around years ago, and we weren't going anywhere positive, anywhere fast. And so, you know, my hat's off to the town council and the school committee. And when there was an opportunity where I was asked, I didn't want to tell, I don't want to tell my kids that I walked away. So to answer the question, you know, what, you know, what better things do we have to do? I don't think there's anything better that I have to do, and I'm going to make room for the East Greenwich School Committee, just like I made room for every other important opportunity in my life. And I look forward to the opportunity to serve, if I'm given that chance. So I ask for your vote, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up will be Will.
Well, well, it's tough to follow-up after Kevin, so I'm going to try my best. East Greenwich, the schools are very important to me, to my family, they're important to all of us. They help shape our growing children. The schools directly affect our property value as well. So if the importance to you is in the eyes of a parent, a former student, or even a homeowner, having great schools is important for East Greenwich. Our schools are going to continue to attract new families and businesses alike. So let's work together to continue to deliver great schools. Let's work together to ensure our kids are safe and healthy. Let's focus on addressing the problems a growing district will be facing. So my pledge is just to do just that, to work with the committee, superintendent, the council, and most of all, the parents of the community, to do just that. So if I, if I'm elected and I have the auditude to serve in the committee, yeah, you know, you can, again, that's my pledge, just to work with everyone, to continue to deliver the great schools. And that's all I got. Have a great night. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Will. Last but not least, Tim, to you.
Well, thanks. You know, I was thinking about this last night, Elizabeth, as I watched the Senate and the state rep forum that you did a brilliant job on, and I think most people know this, but perhaps it's helpful to say, what's the one part of a common platform for Justine, Anthony, Chad, Bridget, all five town council members, and now all three school committees, all those folks, you know, seeking elective office, talk a lot about the schools? And so, you know, again, we've talked about how, you know, we're sort of differentiated for East Greenwich, and, you know, the core asset is the school system, and it's also, you know, an issue across the board for elected candidates. What I really do think is that school committee, unlike those other positions, you know, is a, should be and is, I think, a completely nonpartisan matter, precisely because the schools matter to everybody. So, you know, it doesn't matter whether you're RD or U, we all have a common interest, and there really isn't any ideology or partisan bent to the school committee. So going forward, you know, again, for this next four-year term, just to summarize, there's a five-year strategic plan that we covered 2020 to 2025. There's obviously a budget this year, and then going forward every year, the budget is always hard, and especially during a pandemic where we're going to get less money from RIDE, we have unanticipated expenses with PPE, and we don't know what could happen tomorrow or the next day. You know, the fiscal, you know, stewardship of the budget is not just an annual function, but it's a weekly function. I just became a community member on the Finance and Revenue Committee recently, and so I've already jumped into the fray. But, you know, I think that's just a core responsibility for everybody on the school committee going forward. And then the teacher contract, which we talked about for 2022, and I would add to that, hasn't really come up tonight, but, you know, if you just follow the trend line on enrollments and the number of students, we're hitting the, we're hitting the wall in terms of facilities. So Cole was beautiful and spectacular, and most people remember when, you know, Cole was built, but the next challenge, and I'm not sure when this would fall, but, you know, our facilities are really stretched in the high school and some of the elementary schools as well. So I think I would add facilities to the mix, and then we did talk about technology. So I think school committee work is a privilege and, you know, again, a nonpartisan affair, but I think there are just some extraordinary issues on the table, and that's both exciting and humbling to think that if I get your votes and I get elected to the school committee, we have some heavy stuff to do. And just real quick, before I finish, I just want to thank everybody on the current school committee. I've spent quality time, and I know Will has, and Kevin, but to the folks who are coming off, to Carol Mark, who's done this for eight years, who's done a terrific job, to whom, you know, I think the um, to whom, you know, uh, I think the town would, uh, recognize as really opening up the process to the public um, and taking, you know, community engagement to a whole new level. Um, we will miss Carolyn. Um, we'll certainly miss Matt Plain, who's a hell of a guy and, um, who has some real subject matter expertise in, in education law. And we're going to miss Jeff, who works in a charter school too. They've all been terrific to me and to Will and Kevin. Um, again, um, just absolutely, uh, you know, skilled and hardworking and dedicated folks. And to the folks who are still on the committee, uh, Dr. McEwen, uh, is a, is a jewel. To have a professional, uh, you know, educator who knows the theory and practice of education and has been a assistant soup is a, is a tremendous thing. Um, to have Ann and Allison, I don't want to pair them together, they're individuals, but, um, these are two whip-smart lawyers, um, who are passionate and who have dedicated so much time. I, I think, you know, again, if you knew what went on behind the scenes, um, in developing the reopening plans, um, with Allison and, and everyone, uh, it's just remarkable. Um, and then Gene, who's a little quieter on these calls, but to have a, a statistician and a, you know, a quant, um, genius like Gene and to have somebody, again, who doesn't have kids in the school, I don't have kids, I have adult children, so my kids aren't in the district right now, but, um, you know, to have somebody who's committed to public service, I look at them all as relevant models. I want to thank them for everything that they did to get all three of us, um, you know, uh, on board and, uh, and up to speed more or less. And, and again, thank you, Elizabeth, for putting this on. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. Um, thank you for bringing up facilities. That's obviously an area we could have talked about, but, um, there will be time. And chances are, you're all going to be on the school committee. So, um, I'm going to unmute everybody so you can, uh, say your farewells and then we are... Sorry, hold on just a second. I need to decline a phone call. My daughter, so I, you know. Anyway, um, let's see here. We should be mainly unmuted. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, good night.
Good night.